And like, um, what she thought, like, what she was, her eye color, her name, the baby's name started with, and then the date. And I got the date right. I just wanted it to be on my.
Good evening.
It was, and I got a ten dollar bubble gift card.
Good evening.
I spent it all yesterday.
Good evening. The Thursday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two regular school board meeting of the school district of Haverford Township is now called to order. Let's rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
Our twenty twenty-five district goals are social and emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish, to prepare contemporary citizens, to modernize and expand learning experiences, to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society, and diversity and inclusion, to establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. As we call the meeting to order, I want to remind everyone that as required in the district's existing E S S E R health and safety plan, all students, staff, and visitors must wear masks properly while in our school buildings during times of substantial to high COVID transmission rates. The most recent Delaware County data indicate that we are in a period of high transmission. All visitors, including people attending this meeting, in our high school auditorium must wear masks properly, such that they cover your nose and mouth until you exit the building. When we invite participants to the front for public comment, you will need to keep your mask on. If you do not have a mask, we have provided masks in the back of the room. Please now go get one to wear during the meeting. If you choose not to wear a mask during the meeting, we will ask you to leave the building. You may then watch the meeting on the district's YouTube page where it is being streamed live. We thank you for your cooperation, everyone. We have a full agenda tonight and a lot of people in the room. We appreciate your cooperation as we work through tonight's business. The first item is the roll call. Ms. Martha Q., please.
Dr. Crispin.
Here.
Dr. King.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Dr. McKay. Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Mr. Feinberg.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here. Um, Ms. McKay is, or Dr. McKay is traveling. Next is the official minutes. I welcome a motion to approve the official minutes from the February third, twenty twenty-two regular public board meeting. Crispin, second. Moved in second, did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved, and I'd like to remind the board to please speak clearly into the microphone and to state your name when giving motions so that the minutes can be properly recorded. And I will turn it over to our assistant superintendent and superintendent, Ms. Jen Zaxa, to introduce our first student reports.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman. It is a pleasure this evening to welcome to the front of the room and to share with us a bit this evening, Dr. Jabari Whitehead, who is the principal of Chatham Park Elementary School. And he has brought along several students who will be telling us more about the community of caring that they have created at Chatham Park. Thank you for being here, Dr. Whitehead.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, school board members, Haverford Township, community members, Chatham Park Bulldog parents. We're excited this evening to talk about our community of caring core values and the place it holds in our school community and what it means. Uh, the best part about this tonight is that we had opportunity, myself, along with teachers and our outstanding school counselor, Ms. Malam, who is here with us tonight. We were able to identify five students who really exemplify the five core values of caring, respect, responsibility, trust, and family. As you can see, I probably don't need a microphone, so, so pardon me if it gets a little loud. So we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, at Chatham Park, we have some core beliefs. I believe any organization, family, or entity needs to have an identity, have a belief system. Uh, if you've been around Chatham Park long enough, you'll see these terms or hear these terms. Be brave, not perfect. We all want to show up as our best selves every day, so that gives permission for us as adults, parents, family members, community members, our students, and teachers and staff to show up to be our best, but understand at the same time it's a journey, so we want to instill that in our students. Growth mindset. Every expert was a beginner. That's what we're looking for in our students. We want to make sure that our students understand the power of yet. Like, if you have a barbell in front of you, if you're doing a deadlift and it's like one thirty-five, you know, don't worry about the guy next to you that's doing seven hundred, that's okay, because he probably started off at one thirty-five as well. So it's about the power of yet. Every expert was once a beginner. Strong mind, strong body, we want to model healthy habits. Those habits are very important. The mindset, understanding our mental health, and healthy activities so that ultimately our children can grow up and make sure they can achieve the goals and the gifts they want for their lives, to become their best selves. And obviously, the practice of gratitude. I often, often shudder when I hear someone say they're self-made or that did it all on their own. There's a great chance that you do not know, and I remind our students, no one knows about that sliding door moment that someone spoke your behalf behind closed doors. That's important. We serve and we practice gratitude, there's so much science behind the benefits is for your, for your body. Honestly, we all look, if we look hard enough, if we look hard enough for things, negative things, we're very easy way, you're sure to find it. What you look for, you find, so we want to practice gratitude. Again, our core values at Chatham Park. I arrived at Chatham Park four years ago, and we were able to, we were really trying to hold on to our identity. Chatham Park was already a special place, it was already in great hands before I got there, but we were looking for something to tie us all together as a bond. So we had caring, respect, responsibility, trust, and family. We highlight these core values over the course of school year and pull them into our curriculum. So we found ways to celebrate our students. We want to recognize the small wins, and each month, and see you see from two, uh, twenty twenty, that when we, when we were taking our photographs to celebrate our students, again, that's a group of students that were recognized, not by just teachers, but by the school staff, uh, lunch monitors, et cetera, recognized our students. Uh, there's another one, and you may, some, I think a couple of them are in this picture. Let's see, Gemma, and Little Shawnee, Gemma, oh. Totes adorbs, um, so, and my eyes are closed there, my kids make fun of me for smiling with my eyes shut, I don't know why I did it. I had too much teeth in my mouth, but that's another. All right, Bulldog Brag. We started a Bulldog Brag, finding another way, particularly in these times, to honor our students. So basically, it's a way that anybody in the building can acknowledge the small wins for our children. The more we see ourselves being successful, the higher efficacy and, uh, the greater belief in ourselves, so. If you, I'm not going to read to you the process, as you can see, but basically, anybody can take a moment and identify something good, catching our children being good, and that's it. That's what we want to do. Quick, fast, and it goes home with a smile. So again, that's the front and back, it looks like. Here's some smiles that come as part of it. Look at those faces, look at that. All right. All right, so we, again, we're celebrating our students, all right? All right, and now our presenters tonight. We have Gemma Hoffman, who will present the core value of caring, Ben Robinson, who will present about respect, Claire Dehaven, who will present about responsibility, Sean Healy, who will talk about trust, and family is Sophia Snay. And let's see who's first. Gemma.
When Dr. Whitehead became the principal of Chatham Park about three years ago, the most significant thing he brought with him was the community of caring. And today, I'm here to talk to all of you about what I believe is one of the most important community of caring core values. Caring. Being caring is a fundamental way of life that helps bring communities together. Where you feel cared for is most likely your happy place, because we all feel comfortable in the place we feel cared for. And at Chatham, I feel all, all staff members try to create that type of atmosphere, that type of place where you feel comfortable. I just came back from a family vacation, and the day I came back, there were screaming kids waiting at the school entrance to greet me. I felt really happy that day, knowing that people miss me while I was gone, and I was happy they welcomed me back with open arms. Even just when I dropped my pencil case on the floor, going to social studies and somebody picks it up, I feel cared for. This atmosphere at Chatham is the key to why I and so many other students are so happy every day when we walk into school. Staff at Chatham Park are thoughtful and work hard to try to get to know each of their students as individuals. That's why at Chatham, people can be recognized outside of academics. People can be chosen for projects, not because they're good at a subject, but because they bring their unique selves to the projects. Caringness is something that I experience every day, and sometimes I think I take that for granted, because there are plenty of people in the world that feel neglected every day and are never even called by their names. The caring circle has never got to them, but at Chatham, we make sure that if somebody does something caring for us, we spread the kindness and we care for somebody else in return, and that's a unique thing. I know that Chatham will always be a comfortable place for kids to learn and grow, because at Chatham, people care for each other.
Mr. Robinson.
Chatham Park can show respect in lots of different ways. Respect is more than just a word. You can't just say it, you have to show it. Respect is as easy as saying thank you, you're welcome, or even hi. As one school, we should know and understand how and why we show respect. You can show respect in a classroom when you do not talk over people or listen when people are talking. You can show respect when you are in the hall. You can open a door for someone or say a simple hi. You can also show respect to your teachers. You shouldn't talk over them or talk back to them. Even just listening to them will show respect to them. You can also show, um, wait, you, even just listening to them shows respect. You can also, um, show respect outside of school, like saying hi or good morning to someone. You can say hi to someone you don't even know. When you say please or thank you, people will like you more and will want to be around you more. Also, when you say please or thank you, it is kind and respectful. When you say thank you, you have to know what it means. When you say thank you, you're respecting and appreciating what the person you are saying it to is doing. If someone shows respect to you, you should pass it on. Chatham Park is like one big family, we respect one another. The dictionary refers to the word respect as a feeling of admiring someone or something that is good, valuable, or important. At Chatham, we are all valuable and important in our own way. Everybody should show respect. When you show respect and somebody passes it on, it leads to a good community. When we have a good community, we have trust, caring, responsibility, family, and respect.
Dr. Whitehead has had some great ideas for her school, but the one with the biggest impact was clearly the community of caring. The community of caring has five core values: caring, responsibility, respect, trust, and family. Chatham Park is a space where you can be all of those and feel safe, because people are those too. People in our school have opportunities to be responsible. Being responsible means being able to have a clean workspace and being able to do your homework on time. It means taking care of your school grounds and being a good role model for other students. It means pushing your chair on at the end of the day so the janitor doesn't have to do it for you. Responsibility in general can look like listening to your teacher or staying quiet in the halls when someone else is speaking. Responsibility is important to our school community. You can be responsible when you help younger kids. You show respect to your school by being responsible to your school, like returning library books. Other people can trust you if you are responsible, because they know they can count on you to help you when you need it most. Caring for things on your school ground to make sure they can stay pretty and safe is responsibility. Lastly, working together as a family to get things done is being responsible. I walk my brother and friends home from school and make sure nothing bad happens to them. That is responsibility. It is important to be responsible, because in dangerous situations, you might know what to do in order to help others. When you grow up, no one will be taking care of you, so you need to know how to be responsible and do things yourself. In conclusion, responsibility ties together all of the core values at Chatham Park.
Trust. Trust is an easy and simple word to use, yet not many people truly understand its meaning. Trust is defined in the dictionary as belief that someone or something is reliable, good, honest, and effective. We can build trust with others and within ourselves. Trust is hard to build but easy to lose. When someone breaks trust, it's hard to regain it. Trust can also come in many forms, but one of the most important is showing trustworthy behavior when no one's watching. Chatham Park is a place of learning and growth, where you can express yourself as a person. It's also a place where we develop trust every day. We see this in example of the leadership of Dr. Whitehead, our teachers, and students. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. At Chatham Park, we take our duties as students ser- seriously and demonstrate trust every day. Some examples of this include being respectful and quiet in the hallway so other students can learn, listening to your teachers, finally, using our school recess equipment and return, and with, and with respect, and returning it to its proper location. Also, our teachers have trust in us to complete our assignments and projects at home. When the fifth grader is doing centers on our Chromebooks, we are trusted to work with maturity and respect. As a fifth grader, I know Chatham Park has helped us develop skills and trust ourselves. It can be hard to put pressure on yourself and complete the tasks. In the long run, our Chatham Park students will succeed because we learned about trust for our teachers and ourselves. This is why Chatham Park is such a special place to learn.
Good evening, board members, faculty, and families. It's an honor to be before you today to speak about the core value of family. Family is important, because it represents those who love you, invest in you, guide you, and encourage you to be the best you can be, those who keep you safe and provide a place of belonging. I have a personal connection to the core value of family, because my real family has had a great impact on me. They love and care for me, they spend quality time with me, ensuring that we make special memories together. They push me to get good grades and to always do my best, even if I might not want to. In the end, it always turns out to be something that I'm glad I did. As it relates to school, Chatham Park has really been a second home and family to me. They have made me feel welcome, especially Dr. Whitehead. In the morning, he always says, "May your day be filled with sunshine and jelly beans." Everyone tries to put down the action, and it really helps. Chatham is a safe place, is a place where I feel valued and my teachers invest in me. We respect each other's differences and show empathy. When our friends are sad, we sit with them, listen, and encourage them. We even get, even give hugs. Don't tell my parents about the hugs around the pandemic. I have loved meeting and making friends since first grade, and I've grown a lot as a result. As a Chatham Park family, when one of us, when one of us succeed, we all succeed. To close, I would like to leave you with this acronym for family. F is for friendliness is contagious. A is for always be empathetic. M is for make, make memories together. I is for include others. L is for love each other, and Y is for you succeed, we all succeed. Thank you.
And, uh, thank you all, and, uh, just for the record, these students wrote all their words on their own. I can't take any credit for that. It's a real telling sign when the students can articulate how meaningful something is to them, when we're not doing it for them or giving them things to say, so. There's a lot of insight for us that helps us grow as well. Uh, just a couple more things. Our fifth graders, in honor of our community of caring values, wanted to demonstrate some ways, a PSA, for our students to watch, so they can understand what we don't do at school and how we should respond in the restroom, so.
Do you want to do something bad, because that's fun, right? Okay. Stretch them on the walls, and I'm gonna use it to kind of take my towel. I'm gonna make it. You know, I'd be even more sick than like making mess. I dare you to stand on the sink. Okay. No, no! Don't be the kid that destroys bathrooms. They tripped on their mess because they destroyed the bathroom. It's bad for your school, yourself, your classmates, so please, don't be that kid.
Uh, we remind students every day as well that we don't, uh, that we don't want CVS-sized receipt-sized, uh, paper towels. So this is, this is where it's coming from.
Don't use that much paper towel. You don't need to use a little.
Uh, whatever.
Okay, whatever.
Oh, you don't miss them.
And put it in the trash can. Don't just throw it on the ground.
Whatever.
Make sure you do it every time you come into the bathroom. And make sure it gets in the trash can and not a lot of paper towels.
Don't run in the halls.
Don't run in the halls! Oh, whatever. Oh, sorry, are you okay? Sorry, are you okay? Don't run in the halls.
So, so to wrap this up, we had Thirty Days of Kindness, we're still on Random Acts of Kindness Week as well, so our students were involved in a challenge. They followed a calendar, and again, this is driven by a fifth grade, but you can find this throughout our school as well. And in conclusion, our Chatham Park elementary school community, thanks for your time this evening, and just remember, Chatham Park is a special place. So once a bulldog, always a bulldog. We have bulldog power, and we are bulldog strong. I'm gonna invite these students back up, can we, quick, so I could have a little gift for you? Come on up. So face the, face the audience, go over there. You all put back, people. Because they are always showing up, being consistent in their character every day, it's like they're always ready to play, like being in a game. So I go, I don't know if you guys have a game on arcade and media? So it's a great opportunity to play, and parents, take your children there to hang out, have a good time, so each of these guys have two hours' worth of arcade time here. All right, make sure you let your parents play. Thank you very much, everyone, thank you, school board, thank you.
Dr. Whitehead, we'd just like to thank you and, and the students, and of course, the staff at Chatham Park, as well as the community, for, uh, instilling all of these wonderful core values that you've shared with us, uh, into your community, and just for sharing a little bit of the fun with us as well this evening. and just for sharing a little bit of the fun with us as well this evening. I would like to add on to your comment about the absolutely impressive essays that the students have written to explain what their qualities were, as well as to give us examples. And might I add some strong concluding sentences? So I do want to recognize their work specifically and thank you all for bringing it here this evening.
Thank you.
The next item is our middle school student report, and we have Sutton Gold.
Hi. I have to follow that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sutton Gold. I am the middle school representative for tonight. I'm a 7th grader at HMS, and I enjoy being a Ford very much. I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak tonight. The winter sports team wrapped up their seasons last week. Our student athletes, coaches, and families really enjoyed the opportunity to participate interscholastic sports. One highlight of our winter sports season was our wrestling team went undefeated. It was pretty cool. Coaches Jones and Hoban and the wrestlers battled through a tough Central League and won every match, an accomplishment that deserves recognition. We continue to prepare for our spring student-led conferences. We have weekly tasks that our advisory teachers guide us through so that we can confidently run our conference. I'm excited for this because now I can actually participate in conferences and talk about my grades with my parents and my teachers. We are looking forward to Tuesday, Tuesday as in T-W-O-S-D-A-Y, 2/22/22 next week. This is a palindrome date, and we have a bunch of school spirit activity to celebrate this anomaly: twinning and like two tacos for lunch, which is pretty cool. Yesterday was theme night for students in select chorus ensembles, which took place right there. The theme was The Beatles, and everybody knocked it out of the park: the jazz band students, orchestra students, Seventh Heaven, Four Decks, everyone. We are excited to announce that the HMS Jazz Festival has been rescheduled for Friday, February 25th, at Haverford High School. The festival is from 6:30 to 10:30 p.m., and nine middle schools will be performing. In February, we are recognizing Black History Month. Our teachers are highlighting our Heritage Appreciation Club, which is a student club which is sponsoring some educational activities and a door decorating contest, which we decorate our doors. It's kind of self-explanatory. Lastly, we hope that you enjoy the crumble cookie and gift card we left for you. Today is National Random Act of Kindness Day. For my act of kindness, I noticed it was about to pour when I was on the bus. I was the last one on the bus, and all of the windows were down. And I went around and shut all the windows to spare my bus driver the trouble, all in a day's work. Happy National Kindness Day to you all. Thank you for allowing me to present.
Thank you so much. The high school student report tonight is from Mia Dewald.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mia Dewald, and I'm currently a junior at Haverford High School. The second semester has started wonderfully. I'm currently taking chemistry, AP Human Geography, string orchestra, and Intro to Calculus. I've had so much fun meeting my new classmates. While these classes are academically challenging, Haverford's teachers always make it worth it. In the world of standardized testing, students received their Keystone results from last year and have had the opportunity to register for the March SAT. The second back-to-school night is also coming up on the 24th, allowing parents to meet all of their child's new teachers. Haverford's athletes have been upholding Haverford's esteemed sports reputation as the Haverford Bocce Team won their most recent game along with the boys' basketball team. Haverford's cheerleaders just returned from showing their H Pride in Florida at Nationals after earning 2nd place in the league. The girls' basketball team has certainly made us proud as they finished 1st place in their regular season. The boys' and girls' basketball teams had some tough losses in the Central League playoffs, but our 5th and 9th, respectively, in District 1, are looking to make a run at states. Numerous swimmers and track teams are currently achieving their personal bests in competitions, and wrestlers are grappling with the upcoming playoffs. The athletic department has just started a new sports broadcasting club, which has already begun calling basketball games. They look forward to expanding to outdoor sports shortly. This past Monday was our annual singing Valentine Day. Choral students have been working incredibly hard the past few months selecting songs, coordinating outfits, and attending regular hearings to prepare for this wonderful treat. Haverford Best Buddies also held their annual Wing Bowl this past Friday. Staff and students headed to the auditorium and supported their fellow peers and teachers in the chicken wing eating competition. This year's victor was none other than Mr. De Sina, who generously donated his $100 prize back to Best Buddies. The Young Democrats and future Republican Cubs have begun teaming up in a nonpartisan effort to register seniors to vote in the upcoming months. Not to be forgotten is the HQ team. They have just advanced to the semifinals for the ninth year in a row. Haverford hosted this year's semifinals just this morning while Haverford delivered a fantastic win and will advance to the finals. This week was also Haverford's Week of Kindness as members of the No Place for Hate Club and the Student Senate teamed up to hand out hot chocolate and positive affirmations to students as they came into school. With the Drama Club's production of Mama Mia continuing and fun activities like spring sports and prom on the horizon, our H Pride only continues to grow. With spring in the air, these next few months should offer some wonderful opportunities for students. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much. Those student reports and the presentation are always a highlight of the meetings. Thank you for sharing all that's going on in our schools. Ms. Saxa, you will have the superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman. Good evening. I'll begin tonight with a few remarks and then be turning it over to my colleague, Nicole Battistelli, who will be able to provide a few more details regarding the recommendation that is currently before the board. Just as a little bit of history regarding the Health and Safety Plan, it has been revised throughout the year to respond to changing circumstances. You may recall that in December, we began our conversations by looking at what the current data was at the time, and we've continued to discuss that Health and Safety Plan at every meeting since those December meetings. We've shared updated information with the board and have begun making whatever changes we felt we could at the time. Two weeks ago, at this board meeting, we proposed shifting from mask mandatory to mask recommended beginning February 28th. At that meeting, the board shared their questions, and tonight Nicole will respond to those questions by providing just a little bit more clarity about when we might need to return to mask required and how we will support students with disabilities. So I'm now going to turn it over to Nicole for that information, as well as some updated statistics. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. So this evening, I'm going to present an update on the data I presented two weeks ago, as we stated at the last board meeting. This chart is the same chart that I presented two weeks ago at the board meeting, but I've updated it to February 15th, which is the most recent data available on their website as of today. So, you know, last week I presented on this data, and here is the updated slide showing where we stand today. And this is in Delaware County, according to the CDC website. In addition, I updated the district-wide case counts. I updated this right before the board meeting, so I have up till today. Again, I include it today and this week, even though we're not quite through the week, which is what I did at the last board meeting. As you can see, the case counts continue to decline across the district. And again, this is of the cases as of, you know, 6 o'clock this evening that I had from today. As far as the proposed revisions, as discussed at the February 3rd board meeting, we are proposing move to mask recommended as of February 28th based on the information and guidance that we've presented over the past several meetings. Masks will still be required on school buses as federally mandated, as well as for those returning from isolation, from five days of isolation, and those participating in tests to stay. We will continue to support those, both those who choose to wear a mask and those who do not. And I wanted to note that N95 masks will be made available through the Office of Emergency Management, and that's being distributed through the DCIU. When discussing the mask recommendation at the last board meeting, a board member asked a question regarding what would trigger masks being required again. And so here we have outlined a proposed addition to the Health and Safety Plan. This recommendation is based on the PA Department of Health's definition of an outbreak. Obviously, we would not want to have an outbreak, and therefore, masks would be required again in any building that reaches 3% of the population testing positive over seven days. This will be in place until the total case count drops below 3% in that given billing over seven days. This does not mean we're looking at 3% of the population testing positive in a day. It's 3% over seven days, so the total over seven days. This will be monitored in a rolling seven days, similar to what the PA Department of Health requires us to do for the 14-day, 5% rolling total. And I have linked there the PA Department of Health link that outlines the outbreak criteria for a school. Again, the point of our Health and Safety Plan has always been to keep children in school, and that is what we feel will enable us to continue to keep our schools open. Another proposed revision, a school board member at the last meeting asked about students with disabilities. And this was already in our Health and Safety Plan. We're just revising the language slightly. Everything in bold would be the new language so that we can state that, if necessary, it's to consider reasonable accommodations to allow students to continue in-person learning to the greatest extent practical. And that is the presentation this evening. I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Esca.
Thank you, Nicole. So our recommendation, as Nicole just described, is before the board during the business portion of our agenda this evening. We know that you are aware, but I think it bears repeating that we do not take the decision-making process lightly. And I would like to recognize and thank Nicole for all of the work that she has put in over the course of the past two years to continue to keep up with the many things that have changed throughout. I will just say in conclusion that if approved, we will continue preparations that are already underway to ensure that we make this as smooth a transition as possible for students, staff, and community. Thank you.
Now there's an opportunity for the board to ask any questions.
Yeah, I have one. I, um, sorry. I wanted to know, you mentioned that N95 masks will be distributed through the ICU. I'm wondering if you could detail that a bit more? If, you know, if you're a parent who is concerned or, you know, with me compromised and wants a child to have a mask, what process do you go through? Will it be handed out to school?
I don't have all of the details as of right now. We received notification that they'll be distributed through the DCIU. They're coming from the Office of Emergency Management. Once we receive them, we're going to treat them like the masks we have in our schools, where they'll be made available to students and staff throughout all of the buildings in our district.
Okay. And do we have a sense of how many we have?
I do not.
I have a question. So regarding the 3% threshold that's in place, I understand that it's lower than the 5% that's listed on the Department of Health website. But do we have any data to support an actual number where a threshold is recommended? Not before we get to an outbreak, but actually to mandate masks?
A number? I'm sorry, I didn't...
A percentage. So in other words, do we have any data to support why we're choosing the number of 3%?
We chose the number based on that would let us prevent, get to the 5% threshold. So we just chose it as a number prior to getting to the point where we have to contact the Department of Health considering closing schools.
Okay. And then by any chance, are there other districts that are mask-recommended that are using a percentage lower than 3%?
In our area, I believe... I'm not sure if they're doing it now or if that's what they're voting on soon, because many districts are, you know, voting this week or next week. I believe there are two local districts using a percentage. I think one is 2.5, one is 2, and their timeframe is different.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of what you said.
The timeframe, so we looked at... We're going to look at a week. And I think their timeframe in some... One district's 14 days, and I don't know what the other district is.
And if I could just ask you to clarify for me again, the 3% number, it's over the course of seven days?
Yes.
So it's not meaning that 3% has to be each and every day?
No. So when, back in January, when our numbers were higher, we were very closely monitoring our numbers to make sure we didn't hit the 5% in our buildings. And what the PA Department of Health requires is to have a 14-day rolling timeline for these cases. So on day one, one person is positive at, let's just say, Chatham Park. Day two, two, you know, two people, three, two people. And then you tally that up. And if you get to, at the PA Department of Health, 5% over 14 days, that's when there's a concern. Now, we get to day 15, child on day one drops off the total because it's a rolling 14 days. So we're going to do the rolling 15 days, or, I'm sorry, five days, but with 3%, or seven days a week.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Can I... I'd like to ask... I think I... Can you hear me? Sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. Sorry. At the last meeting, I asked about cafeteria and the maintaining six feet of distance. We are still maintaining six feet of distance in the cafeteria.
Yes. So we are going to make changes gradually. So we're not going to change right now. We'll, you know, collect our data, see how things go, and then start to make those other changes as time goes on. But we're not recommending that change as of today.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions as well. You know, and my first question, because I really appreciate all of the work that the administration has done on this. Just like Ms. Saxa said, you know, so much effort has been put into this since we started discussing it in December. And one of the questions I had asked at the last meeting was whether we would be getting guidance, you know, within the next few weeks, about new benchmarks. And because I think that we collectively, as a community, are seeing that case count is not the benchmark, at least, you know, community case counts. And so I really appreciate the effort by the administration to, you know, to keep our schools open, to avoid that 5% and putting, you know, really a measure that would automatically put back in the masking. But I just want to come back to my previous question about the guidance because I am hearing potential CDC changing guidance about masking as soon as next week. I haven't seen any official guidance coming from CHOP or other, you know, health, either local or state health departments. And just, you know, I know that Dr. Ruchi attends, you know, meetings among the superintendents, and I just wanted to get a sense of whether there has been more discussion about whether we would be receiving guidance. Because I truly believe that there... That there has been a failure of leadership at the top here with the health departments and the state really not giving us that guidance and leaving it to us. So, you know, to the extent that guidance is coming, to the extent that guidance is coming down the pike in a week or two, have we heard anything about that? And is that something that we should be considering tonight?
So what I can tell you is that I was able to attend a superintendent's meeting this week, and there was no indication that the Delaware County Department of Health would be in a position to be providing any additional guidance at any particular point in the near future. As far as the, what we probably all read in the news, for chance the CDC will be providing additional guidance next week, I have not, you know, we don't have any inside information about that, obviously. But I also have not heard that they are specifically addressing schools in that updated guidance. So that would be something that if we were to look for something, we would be wanting to look for that, and we don't know.
And same question, I know that we follow Dr. Rubin, I know that we follow Dr. Rubin a lot, and, you know, his appearance, he has been very helpful with his guidance to provide advice through, you know, his blog and also, you know, media appearances, but I don't think at this point we have any sort of official guidance from CHOP or the CHOP Policy Lab. And I just don't, and I know that he has provided us with specific guidance in the past, and so I had another question about whether we see that happening in the near future as well.
I am not aware of any indications that he would be providing us in particular any guidance, nor am I aware of any updated blogs that he has put out since the last time we've met.
Yeah, sorry, actually, my question was more about CHOP as a whole, not just specifically Dr. Rubin, because I know that we are following him very closely, but more of a guidance coming from the organization.
We are not, as I said, we are not aware of any specific guidance that's coming out. They do publish the blog every couple of weeks. It is not always local. It is sometimes data about Wisconsin or somewhere else. And thank you for pointing out it is not just Dr. Rubin, it's the whole Policy Lab that puts that out. So unfortunately, I can't share with you that there is anything upcoming that I'm aware of.
Thanks. Like I said, I really appreciate both of your work on this. I guess, what is the plan for, you know, if the board votes tonight to go mask-recommended? What is the plan for communication? Because like I've pointed out in the past, just because you want everyone not to be in a mask anymore, that's not what the vote would mean. The vote would mean that someone is continuing to, would, from that point on, choose not to wear a mask or would choose to wear a mask. And I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that there are going to be teachers that continue to choose to wear a mask. And so what would the communication be to make sure that the community would be understanding of those choices?
Thank you. Dr. Snaga, we would love to answer. I'll take that one, Nicole, thanks. So thank you for being, you know, aware and sensitive. We recognize that, you know, there are many differing opinions and differing family situations. And we actually have some time set aside tomorrow for all of our faculty and staff to work through some, just questions that are going to arise for them and some messaging. And really, the messaging for this goes along with what you heard Dr. Whitehead talk about, what you've heard our student reps talk about, is just really respecting that people are coming from different places and that if this is the decision, that it is recommended, and that people have differences, and we're going to be okay with that. And we don't know everyone's family situation and what that decision will be. And it's our job to make this, you know, this transition as smooth and accepting as possible for anyone who is within our school buildings.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. And like I said, I appreciate all the effort that has gone into this decision and everything that goes into it. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I think it's really important to also note that the purpose of the health and safety plan. Can you hear me now? Fabulous. So it's really important for us to keep in mind that the express purpose of the health and safety plan is to maintain safe in-person schooling. These are not just arbitrary recommendations, it's not arbitrary guidance, it is to keep our students in-school, in-person learning. With that in mind, with that in mind, also that this is a fluid document, and Ms. Sacks, as you mentioned earlier on, it's been responsive to changes in circumstances throughout the course of this pandemic. We are at a place, we are now considering removing one of the last, I guess, fail safes we have in terms of in-school transmission. But I'm also fully aware that, you know, life is, life goes on. I mean, people outside of school, you know, we don't control whether they wear masks or not, they make their choices and go about their lives in the ways that they choose. What does give me pause, though, is the 3% threshold. So going to the 5%, 5% would be an outbreak rate, and that would constitute us needing to go virtual. And that would then show that there was a failure in the health and safety plan. 3%, I would need to see if there's, there's some real numbers attached to that. 3% sounds low, right? But in terms of real numbers, like in a school building, could you give an example of, you know, in one of our schools, what would 3% look like as a real number?
Sure, many of our elementary schools, that would be 20.
Excuse me, folks, this is an important discussion. You want to hear a decision later? If, you need to be quiet so that the board members can hear each other. That's what I'm asking for.
In one of our elementary schools, that would be 20 students typically? Okay. So would that be, would that be cumulative? So over the course of seven days?
Over seven days, 20 total.
Okay. So three days, three students one day, or three cases one day, five cases the next, and then adding up to that 20, that would then trigger that masks would be required for seven, seven days until that number decreases?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Public comment is on the agenda before the vote. We have a couple more components of the superintendent's report and then the public comment period. This is the time for the board to discuss the health and safety plan. Are there any other comments or discussion from the board?
So just going back to the fluid nature of this plan, if the CDC were to change its guidance, would there be the potential that we, as a board, would come back together, rediscover? And as an addendum to that, if there were a change in the state of COVID cases, would we also come back, would we reconvene and discuss potential changes to the health and safety plan?
Yeah, one of the conditions of having a health and safety plan is that it continue to be reviewed throughout the time period that it's in place.
Thank you.
There's another question here?
So just regarding the current legal matters that are, that we're all reading about, hearing about, are there any concerns, given the recent litigation brought to various school boards, if the Havaford School District could be in the same position, provided that we make changes to our health and safety plan?
Sure. So at the last meeting, I reported on two known cases. We are aware of four cases currently in Pennsylvania. The status of those cases, there are two in the western part, involving North Allegheny School District and the Upper St. Clair School District. In the North Allegheny case, at the temporary restraining order phase, which does not involve testimony, the judge in that decision did require the district to return to masking. In the Upper St. Clair case, at the original phase, they did not require it. That decision was appealed to the federal court, the Third Circuit, and the Third Circuit initiated an emergency order requiring Upper St. Clair to go back to masks. In the eastern part, there is a decision from the Perkyomen Valley School District. They did have an evidentiary hearing in front of the federal judge, and at that time, the judge did order that Perkyomen Valley reinstate their mask-required plan. And in the Springfield School District, the initial request at the temporary restraining order was denied, so Springfield could enter into their, I forget if it was mask-optional or mask-required or mask-recommended plan. However, that case has a hearing scheduled for February 28th. The other two cases from the western part have arguments scheduled for March 24th. So the current status is that of the four cases we're following, in three of the situations, the district was ordered to return to their mask-required plan that was tied to transmission rates. And in the fourth case, which is Springfield, that is, there will be a hearing on February the 28th. So again, as I, as I stated two weeks ago, these are all in the process of litigation. So none of these decisions are final decisions, but they are the standard that's out there. And if, if the question is, could Havaford face one of those actions? The answer is yes. All four districts made changes to their health and safety plan, and all four districts were sued. We know of other districts that have not been sued, but it is a possibility.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more question. Should, should this be approved tonight and go into effect on the 28th? I know that you, I know that you mentioned that there was additional language about accommodating students with IEPs and 504s. Do you feel that that will be a sufficient amount of time to make any additional accommodations that should be needed to, to follow that policy?
Okay, good. I'm just checking in with Nicole, who has already begun to have some of those conversations with families. Yes, we do believe that that would be sufficient time to start the contact and start the processes to talk about each of those individual cases as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Question on the Springfield School District, was that Delaware County or Montgomery County?
That was Delaware County.
This question might be for Jen or Nicole. Is it conceivable that a student who has a 504 or IEP accommodation related to masking, that it would require other students around them to be masked so that student can access education?
So we will view every single case on a case-by-case basis. Everything reasonable is a possibility, and we'd work with the family and typically the family's physician to make reasonable accommodations.
And also, would a family or would a student qualify potentially for a 504 based on an immunocompromised status or another need to be in a space where masking is required? By space, I mean a classroom, where they themselves are masked or their teachers are masked?
So they would already require a 5, like it would be a student who already requires a 504 because of medical conditions?
Can they request a 504 based on a need?
They could, that's what typically happens.
We couldn't hear the last part of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. If any child who has a medical diagnosis that significantly impacts their, you know, ability to perform in school or their major life functions, they would qualify for a 504. That's just a typical, that's not a COVID, that's just typical.
So I think it's important to note that our schools are communities, right? And there's interconnectedness, interdependence, and that certain students may have certain needs, and that we will be responsive to those needs. So it's, it's good to know that the 504 is an available option for families and students. I also want to clarify if moving to mask-recommended would impact the status of our ARPESR funding?
It will not. Not sure if you could hear me there. No, our understanding of the ARPESR funding is that there is no requirement to adhere to any specific piece of that advice, but it is that we have to address those pieces of advice as required in the plan, such as, say, how we will handle masking, how we will handle hygiene spacing, et cetera.
Thank you.
Okay, that seems to conclude the comments from the board. I just want to appreciate everybody's thoughtful consideration of these plans and note again, the long period with which we have attended to these COVID-related matters. Our health and safety plan was passed last summer. We were attentive then that it would need to be revisited, that the conditions in our schools and in the community would need to be reassessed periodically, that our plans would change. We've made changes throughout. People may remember there were times when there was more Plexiglas or things like that in the schools. We learn, we take things into consideration. The, we are able to be at this point tonight because of the thoughtful preparation of the district, of the availability of vaccination, which is a different circumstance than when we initially approved the health and safety plan. I appreciate that the district is being careful to consider the needs of all of our students, and I appreciate the board's thoughtful contribution to this process. The next item on the agenda is a registration update on our kindergarten class. I would just remind the public, we have an agenda, it's posted on our website. We appreciate your attendance in our meeting. There is a lot of business for us to conduct, and the vote is near the end of the meeting. So please be patient with us as we conduct the regular business of this district.
Good evening. Make sure, hopefully you can hear me. Good evening. We'd like to take this opportunity to provide the board with a brief update on our new student registrations. On our first slide here, you're looking at our early registrations for beginners. As Pennsylvania Department of Education defines beginners as students entering the school system for the first time, could be kindergarten or first grade, this particular shot, snap shot, is approximately 30 days out from our launch from the online registration system. These numbers are more or less in line on rough averages with what our projections have been over the last several years and historic patterns. You'll see more about that here in a minute. And as I normally do, if I speak too fast or too quickly, please feel free to interrupt me. This slide captures briefly approximately 72 hours out after lunch the last three years, again, looking at our beginners, because that's the focus of our update here this evening. Across the five elementary schools, you can see general pattern, early registrations, we tend to see a bump within the first 72 hours, definitely within the first 30 days. But I started capturing the first 72-hour snapshots for Dr. Ruchi a couple of years ago, and it was just a pattern we started to repeat to see what types of information we would get, we might be able to gather from that for long-term processing. This slide is the same information as the previous. I'll go back, oh, no, I won't go back. Here we go, I'm sorry. Same data as this slide is here, it's just represented slightly differently, separating out the kindergarten registrations, pre-registrations from the first grade pre-registrations, and you see some general trends over the last three years. So again, not to give anybody motion sickness, but this is the same data here as we have here, just represented slightly differently from a visual perspective. On this slide, and this is the one I expect might generate a few questions from the board, we see, again, the last three years, a general timeline of snapshots at 30 days, at the end of June, and at the end of August. And truthfully, I, you could say arbitrarily picked June 30th and the end of August, based on my observations over the past several cycles, it tends, and when you look at all the data, you know, over eight, 10 months or so, we tend to see general lapses at the end of the school year, and then a slight spike at the end, towards the end of the summer as you go into Labor Day, and then a lull again, if you will, right after Labor Day weekend. So with respect to the board, I chose these timeframes, but again, we could represent the data in any which way, the preference of the board. Also, I would like to point out, and if I could use the table on the left side, I'll just pick on Chatham Park for the moment, the 21-22 table. Chatham Park, you see kindergarten 70 and nine, kindergarten, first grade. Those numbers, as you track from left to right, they're cumulative totals. So if you look at 70 for kindergarten, Chatham Park as the example, 79 on June 30th, and then 81 on August 31st, that's a cumulative total, that's not an additional 79 students or an additional 81 students. That's just trying to attempt to illustrate, again, we see a significant bump within the general first 30 days once we launch registration. And then we have a pattern that is not yet predictable by my estimation of over the next six months or so, how other registrations will flow through. Certainly, as we heard from Mr. Montgomery and associates in previous board meetings, registry, I'm sorry, home sales and different types of sales, you know, residency data falls into that, and birth data, that type of thing. This slide here is our last slide in this brief presentation this evening. And again, it's the same information as on this slide, just captured visually differently. You can see, if I had to pick on the 21-22 representation there, that initial pop, if you will, of 405 combined, beginner registrations combined, kindergarten and first, 405 in the first month, that cumulative total of first grade, I'm sorry, kindergarten and first grade, by the end of June was 508, and then by the, right before Labor Day, approximately, not approximately, exactly 552. So those patterns have been, I wouldn't say predictable, but relatively consistent from a statistical. from a statistical point of view for the last several years. That's all I have for this evening, my quick slides. Any questions from the board?
Is there any comments from the board?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation and for the multiple, tending to our multiple literacies and sharing the data in multiple ways. I appreciate that. So looking at the, in this last slide here, the 2020-21 school year. So there's, it seems like a decent amount more students enrolling that year. Do you have any sense of what was different in 2020, 21?
The number of total students?
So the total number of students in the 2021 school year? So we're seeing 1920, then there's that spike up, and then 2120.
Overall, I'm sorry. I didn't let you figure your question. I was in folly at first, yes. And if I don't have it available visually for the public, but referring back mentally from Mr. Montgomery's presentation from last June, I believe, May or June, then we had a relatively, statistically speaking, an unusual number of spike across all grades that particular year, 2021. We have not identified a pattern from residential sales, from birth rates. Mr. Montgomery did provide the board with an update from the projections, I believe, at December 10th or so, roughly, of '21. The analysis that at that point was inconclusive about, again, causality. The recommendations from Mr. Montgomery and associates was if we were to consider another projection analysis, not to begin or proceed with that before April of this year, just to allow the kindergarten registration numbers and first grade, excuse me, K and 1, to trickle in, if you will, as we get closer to June.
That's helpful. Thank you.
One takeaway for the public would be that from this, we might want to encourage people to register as soon as possible. There is a significant amount of planning in terms of teachers and staffing and class lists and things that happen over the summer. And when we don't get the registrations until August 31st, that just adds a challenge in placement. I mean, of course, we welcome all students, but to the extent that, as a public service announcement, we can ask people to register their incoming students as soon as possible. That helps with the staffing and the planning and class assignments that we'll need to have.
Certainly. We will never only be settled by the first day of school, of course. All right. Thank you very much. For other questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you. We're now at the public comment portion of the agenda. The board values public comment as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the deliberation of important and complex matters that come before the board. However, this is not a question-and-answer period. And while we conduct our business in open public meetings according to the Sunshine Act, it is not a meeting with the public. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This first section is for comments pertaining to items on tonight's agenda. The agenda is published on our school district website in the school board section under Board Docs. There is a later time for public comment on other school-related matters. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. In order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak, and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have any materials that you'd like to distribute, please give them to Mr. Greg Parker, who is seated in the front to the side. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in our meeting minutes. We have 16 or 17 speakers, so a fair amount of public comment to get through. Again, three minutes. When I call your name, you can come to the microphone up front. Mr. Todd Hall is the first speaker.
Good evening. Am I on? Hello? Okay. Good evening. My name is Todd Hall. I reside in the school district of Haverford Township. I've spoken many times before, so my speech this evening is brief. I do have a few points with the way that the meeting was structured tonight to be able to respond after the board discussion. There was a point about the CDC and guidance next week. I learned to be a critical thinker from my education. Case counts are declining, hospitalization is declining. There's more concern about the impacts of masking. I expect the guidance to be a loosening of mask rules. Now, it may not speak directly to schools, because let's be honest, this is political football. It just is the way it is. So there may not be exact school guidance, but there will be CDC guidance. And I can just assume where it's headed. Secondly, as far as using masks as an issue for caring or thinking about others, caring, thinking about others, there's nothing wrong with that at all. That's a great idea. I don't see masks that have a questionable limit of ability to stop the spread as a vehicle for that. I also don't see it being a vehicle to show caring when the case counts and the transmissions are so completely low right now. Finally, for down the road, busing and the executive order about federal public transportation, I would just encourage you to look at that a little more closely. I think if I walked to the corner of Minowa Road and Westchester Pike and asked to get onto a school district of Haverford Township bus, that wouldn't go over very well. So I don't think it's public transportation. Similarly, the entire, the entire school district is not served by the bus system. So it's not, you know, public in that regard. So I thank you for having this on the agenda for tonight, and I am in support of optional masking. Thank you.
Bernadette Lawson is the next speaker.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Bernadette Lawson, and I'm a resident of Haverford Township and the parent of a Haverford High School graduate and current eighth and 11th grader. First, I'd like to give an overdue thank you to the district for its efforts to keep our children safe during the pandemic. I also want to specifically thank the district for providing vaccination clinics, which were so accessible for parents. There is no question that there appears to be two camps in so many of the discussions at school board meetings. Parents are broadly viewed as either anti-vax, anti-mask, or pro-vax, pro-mask. Tonight, I want to provide the board with some nuance. I am a vaccinated, boosted individual, as are my children. Over the last 20-some months, I have worn a mask and prompted my children to do the same. However, given that vaccines are widely available, case counts are significantly lower, given that the scientific community has acknowledged that we are moving from pandemic into an endemic, I ask that the district change its policy to mask optional. It's time. I would also like to comment on contract tracing, or more specifically, any potential reinstatement of this in the future. Thank you to Dr. Royce for recommending the scaling back of this at the January 20th meeting, and to the board for approving. I can only speak to my personal reaction to the many district emails I received. By the week before winter break, I stopped reading the emails altogether, with the understanding that, yes, Omicron was everywhere. And yes, my son did get it two days into the winter break. Our vaccinations did what they were supposed to do. No one else in our household got it, and my son had mild flu symptoms. Our district gets so much right, but our schools are not perfect. As long as administrators spend countless hours tracing student contacts and are off task, the education of our children is compromised. I feel the current model of providing case counts by school is sufficient and should remain so going forward, even with inevitable variants that will likely arise seasonally. In closing, I'd like to address the two board members at the January 20th meeting that despite Dr. Royce's compelling presentation, voted against reducing contract tracing and eliminating testing of asymptomatic staff. This would be Ms. Snodgrass and Ms. Larson. I was incredibly frustrated at your obstinates that contradicted the guidance of a highly respected pediatric expert from CHOP. I fell into the trap of trying to determine your motivations and then thankfully settled on two facts that I do know. You are school board members, and at the end of the day, you are parents as well. I'd like to provide you with one additional fact that I have learned as the parent of a young adult and two teenagers. We cannot protect our children from every bad thing. We just can't. And I ask that both of you keep this immutable truth in mind as you vote on the evolving health and safety plan over the coming weeks. Thank you to the board for providing this opportunity for me to speak.
The next speaker is Amy Needle. The next speaker is Amy Needle.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amy Needle, and I reside on the 200 block of Sagamow Road in Haverford. I have been an ICU nurse for the past 15 years, both locally and in Center City. When a mother is pregnant, she is given the choice for prenatal testing. With those results, the doctors give her the facts and statistics so she can make the best choice for her child. When a baby is born severely premature or sick, the doctors use the facts that they have about the condition and the statistics for the outcome. And then the parents choose how they would like to proceed with care. The American Academy of Pediatrics, along with the CDC, recommend keeping your child rear-facing in the car seat till 2. And then you have the choice to turn the child around or wait longer. I put a hundred on my child when he skis. I feel it's in their best interest. Many doctors and professionals speak out against tackle football at a young age due to concussions. Yet we have a football team, and we allow the parents to choose if the benefits outweigh the risk. These are all choices that a parent doesn't take lightly. They choose what is the best for that particular individual. The benefits outweigh the risks. Virus are out there, they aren't going anywhere. They have been around forever. Even CHOP stopped testing their new admissions for COVID. Parents should be more afraid of RSV, influenza A and V, pneumonia. How about when you have the swine flu, which killed way more children, my family included? We lost enough you to it. The facts are out there. It's not just my opinion. It's not hindering, it's not only hindering our kids' social and emotional well-being, but some kids are having physical side effects. My daughter has a skin infection all around her mouth, her nose, and her cheeks from the mask. Kids in this district have open lesions behind their ears from the mask, and bacterial growth in their mouth are leading to more cavities. The really little kids have never been to school without a mask and are having learning delays and speech delays. Delays and infections from a material that isn't even protecting them from COVID. That and of my two-year-old has never seen, she's never seen people's faces, and she thinks her baby dolls came with a mask. It's their bibs. I'm sorry. We vote you into office to make these decisions based on facts and statistics. And when asked if I live in a good school district, I want to say that I do. And I want to say the board makes decisions based on facts and not their opinion or feeling. Ms. Vitale, you said in your opening statement yourself, you are here for the emotional and social well-being of the students. Your vote matters so much more than just the school, the preschools and the camps and the sports and the fitness centers are suffering. My kids have to wear masks to play basketball and ballet. You're taking away my parental rights to make their choice. We know what is best interest of our children. And the people that signed that petition two weeks ago felt that that was their representation in this room, and they didn't know they needed to be here. We can recommend to mask all, and those who want to can. Please give us a choice, as this is the way forward. Please choose wisely.
The next speaker is Riley Martin.
Hello, my name is Riley Martin. I'm a sixth-grade student at HMS. I am here in support of optional masking for students. I have been absent and went home early more this school year than any year prior due to overheating, headaches, and dizziness from having to wear a mask for the entire school day. There are times throughout the day that I need to put my mask down for a brief moment to breathe. But I get threatened by staff to be sent to the principal's office to sit. I'm asking you to please lift the mask mandate immediately and let us finish the school year out with some normalcy. Let us see our friends' smiles. Let us see our teachers' faces. Let us breathe fresh air. We do not need a transition period. The students that want to continue to wear them are able to do so. Give the rest of us the option to go maskless starting now. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Leslie Wolotko is the next speaker. Leslie Wolotko. Stacy Tomaszczek.
Hi, my name is Stacy Tomaszczek. I live on Arlington Rowan in the district. My kids go to Chatham Elementary, Golden Dogs. First off, thank you for, Dr. Rucci, Ms. Matzuska. Thank you for your service in navigating us through these confusing and stressful times. Thank you for doing your best to keep our kids and our community safe. And a shout out to our teachers. My first grader learned to read during these very unorthodox first years of public school, and that's a credit to our schools and our district. So I really thank you. I felt compelled to speak tonight after viewing the last board meeting online. I was dismayed by the several instances of what I thought was disrespectful and overly dramatic behavior. I am feeling similar feelings tonight. I didn't think that voice, I don't think that angry, angry voice represents the majority of our community. It definitely does not represent the community I know and love. I felt compelled to speak tonight with a plea to the entire community for sanity and rationalism, with the understanding that our children are watching us and listening to us. They hear and see every single thing we say and do, and how we say it and how we do it. How we speak and how we treat each other, especially when we disagree, is imperative. I'm not here to plead with the board to vote yes or no on the changing the mask mandate, because I understand and I emphasize both positions. I find it all very confusing to think about, to understand what the best options. A few weeks ago, a doctor told me that logic had nothing to do with making a decision about getting a COVID test. And today, a doctor told me, we need to stop testing already. It's very difficult to navigate all the guidance with anything having to do with this pandemic. Are masks keeping our community safe or not in our current situation? One side says they're useless and doing more harm than good. The other side is desperate for the continued protection against scary consequences for their immunocompromised child or family member. The world is opening up, though, right? Our school district seems to be following suit with the world. We are going to have to live with COVID and all the other viruses in the world that can harm us. We all need to be respectful of how each family decides to navigate this new world. It's going to get, it's going to take some getting used to. I ask the district for consistency in your messaging and clear guidance on how to handle our children's illnesses district-wide. If masks are no longer mandated, we might see an increase in our kids' illnesses, especially since we are currently in the middle of a winter surge or it goes, oh, that's me. Thank you. That's all. Clear guidance. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elena Wisely.
Good evening. My name is Elena Wisely. I live in the district. I'm a mother, and I want to remind you again that I am also a nurse. I am disappointed tonight to see that after all the compelling arguments of science, that masks are harming our children and providing little, if any, benefit, your vote tonight will be to remove masks only if positivity rates stay below 3%. Do you know my medical history, ma'am? I was interrupted. Please stop the clock. I have an exemption, and I don't need to prove it to you. Absolutely is. It's a medical device. Order, order! Not for that side.
I'm sorry. Could I ask that there not be interruptions to the speaker? Yes, we will give Ms. Wisely her full three minutes.
What happens to the environmental concerns that masks are creating more pollution than the plastic straws that Haverford thinks we need to ban in a small town to the plastic straws that Haverford thinks we need to ban in a small town to save the world? You have all the information you need to know that these masks are not working. That's why so many of you have already switched to N95. How can you not feel foolish sitting there in your N95 after two years of lying to yourself that your cloth masks were protecting you? And now after the stark realization that you have not been in fact protected these last two years, your burden of fear places an N95 on your mask. One, I'm sure that you are reusing, which is not only against science, but it's disgusting, and your fear is not going to dictate our children's lives. I assure you, regardless of this vote, regardless of positivity rates, our children will not wear masks any longer. We are done. While you are working to create obedient soldiers out of our children, we, the parents, have control over their devices and they will listen to us. It's not that we want our kids to be disobedient, it's that we don't want them to have a chronic illness as a result of your unlawfully practicing medicine on them. I don't care what your mugs say, you're not physicians. Just because you don't like the truth doesn't make it untrue. On what level would you say that you are capable of comprehending cerebral hemodynamics? Do you have knowledge of changes that occur to cerebral blood flow caused by partial pressure carbon dioxide that is stimulated during mask-wearing? Or how these changes affect vascular tone and intracranial circulation, which directly impacts cerebral metabolism? Do you have any idea that every single body system is reliant on cerebral metabolism for homeostasis? You can see mask-wearing causes fatigue, anxiety, decreased ability to concentrate, dizziness, drowsiness, headaches, skin breakdown, fainting, decreased empathy perception. You want kids to be nice? Take off the masks. You are seeing an increase in behaviors, headaches, tics, seizure anxiety, and chalking it up to the pandemic. No, these are metabolic changes caused by your masking policies and they are only the surface. Imagine what's taking place on a metabolic level that has yet to be seen. Education is destroying our children's brains for an experimental study. These ailments are not being seen where masks have not been worn. We have a control in this study and it's called Florida. Although these masks have distracted us, we have not forgotten the rest of the fight. Our children are not your social justice warriors, and we are working harder than ever to teach our kids to think critically. You claim that your libraries are filled with books for alternate perspectives so that kids can see multiple points of view. I see no books opposing critical race theory in our schools. There is no opposing you, only your liberal ideologies. That's why in honor of Black History Month, I'm donating a children's book to Menoa, highlighting the accomplished economist and social theorist, former Marxist, 91-year-old Thomas Sowell, who fervently opposes, he fervently opposes CRT and Marxism after having extensively studied both sides for decades. I would like to quote him, since I know many of you probably have no idea who he is. "Much of the social history of the Western world over the past three decades has involved replacing what worked with what sounded good." Thank you.
Jordan Lyons is the next speaker. Jordan Lyons. Jordan Lyons. Meredith Mercantante. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't call your name.
William Bryan. I am a resident of 210 Shelbourne.
Excuse me. Um, I'm calling speakers by name who signed up, and I have not gotten to your name yet, sir.
It is very difficult to hear.
I appreciate that. You are on my list to speak in the second public session. We will get to you. Thank you. It's Meredith Mercantante's turn.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Mercantante, and I'm a resident of Haverford Township. Uh, my comment tonight is brief, but I just wanted to say that I'm here tonight to show my support for optional masking for all students, staff, and visitors in the district buildings. I'm also here tonight to read a letter written by my nine-year-old daughter, currently in fourth grade, who was here but then left. In her words, she says, "When I wear a mask in school, I feel upset and annoyed because masks are difficult for me to breathe in. I miss seeing my friends' faces and being able to understand and hear them when we talk and play. I feel like I can't be myself when I'm wearing a mask. It is also hard when my mask falls down my nose and teachers keep telling me to pull my mask up. Kids should be living a normal kid life, and I feel like it is the time for masks to be optional. Please consider revising the health and safety plan to allow for optional masking for all." Thank you.
Madeline Di Donato is the next speaker. Madeline Di Donato.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Di Donato, and I am a resident of Haverford Township. I spoke at the last board meeting about our freedoms and to stop the discrimination against the unvaccinated and the unmasked. It should be our choice to make. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the same thing. We know the pandemic has affected all of us, our children, more than you know. The anxiety and the stress on them is unmeasurable. We are teaching our children to hide behind masks. It's heartbreaking and unhealthy. We need to stop living in fear. I'd like to speak to all of you board members as mom and dads. What do mom and dads do? We lead and we protect. When it comes to our children, no matter what it's about, we are unstoppable. So I'm asking you to please stop the discrimination, the abuse, the coercion, the shaming, and the segregation of the unvaccinated and the unmasked. Please vote and lead us to the right to choose, because that's what makes this country amazing. It's for our freedoms. Thank you for your time.
Elena Kane is the next speaker. Elena Kane? Elena Kane is the next speaker.
My name is Elena Kane, and I am a lifelong resident of Haverford Township. I have two sons in high school. I'm here tonight to urge the board to vote for the move to optional masking, and also to end the discrimination and segregation against those who choose not to mask or to vaccinate. These are personal choices that must be honored and respected, not just within the school walls, but within our entire community. I'm well aware of the lawsuits in some, uh, in some of the neighboring districts, and I'm sure this is something that the board is taking into consideration. I was outraged to learn that the intent of the parents in the lawsuits against Perkyomen and Springfield School Districts was to restrict the rights and freedoms and punish every other child in the district by imposing their choice for their children on everyone, with no regard or concern, and stripping away others' rights to choose what's best for their children. My youngest son is immunocompromised. He is type 1 diabetic, diagnosed at 22 months old, and asthmatic. He is covered by the Americans with Disabilities Act, just like the children in the lawsuits. His disability is our family's burden and responsibility. At no time has my child's disability ever been an inconvenience to the others in school. At no time has the school district needed to impose restrictions on his classmates, let alone the entire district, to accommodate him because of his disability. His disability is our family's responsibility alone, and it will never be a burden put on the shoulders of our community. At the end of January of 2021, both my sons developed symptoms and both tested positive for COVID. My oldest had stray flu symptoms for four days, fever, body ache, headache. My youngest, the one who's diabetic, had a head cold. No fever, no other symptoms. Thankfully, both recovered fully, along with 12,341,801 other US children. I'd like to present to the board with a new scientific study from the UK in the Journal of Infection. This study shows that immunocompromised children and young people are at no increased risk of severe COVID-19. My son's case is in agreement with this study. With that being said, I'd like to reiterate that I urge the board to move our district forward to optional masking and restore our personal choice, freedoms, and liberties.
We have five more speakers. Andrew Pidgen is next.
Good evening. Andrew Pidgen, Haverford resident. For the first time in the history of humanity, children have been asked to bear the burden of protecting adults. Since the beginning of time, it has been the adult's responsibility to sacrifice anything in order to protect children. It is wired in our DNA to ensure that humanity endures, protect the kids at all costs. Why are kids the only ones having masks forced upon them? Please ask yourself that simple question. I don't know the answer. In every non-medical setting in this country, masks are recommended. It is an indisputable fact that kids are the lowest at-risk group when it comes to getting, spreading, being hospitalized by, or dying from COVID-19. Why are we jeopardizing their learning and their social interactions to manage some adults' anxiety? Quite frankly, it's disgusting what we have taken from them, and we won't know the full extent of the damage for years to come. But you can fix that tonight. With one vote, we can begin to heal. We can interact normally. We can learn the way that we have learned for hundreds of years, face-to-face. I know when this is all said and done, I will be able to look back and know that I've done everything in my power to protect my kids from the enormous government overreach. My kids ask me to do what I have been doing for these last 18 months. I've seen a community come together for a common purpose, to allow kids the opportunity to learn in an atmosphere that works best for them. Catholic and public schools alike have united for this cause. This week, the Archdiocese has announced optional masking in their schools. And even though those parents have gotten the answer they received, there's some of them here tonight to support our cause because they know it's the right thing to do. If other districts have already gone optional in Delaware County, and the Catholic schools within our county, excuse me, within our district, have done the same, logic would dictate that you vote recommended masking tonight. We have data from across the world on what effect masking has had on the spread amongst kids. I've forwarded study after study to you that proves as much. Dr. Rubin has given countless interviews that the choice of whether or not to mask should be with the individual at this point, not dictated by a government body. At what point did we become so hung up on what the CDC said? Go on the CDC's website, look at some of their non-COVID recommendations, and tell me if you think we should mandate what the CDC says. To reduce the risk of alcohol-related harms, the CDC recommends that adults of legal drinking age who choose to drink or drink in moderation by limiting intake to two drinks or less in a day for men. One drink or less per day in women. First of all, this is sexist. And the CDC should be canceled for it, but it's not mandated that beers be sold individually or girls are cut off after one drink at the bar. The CDC also recommends that you don't taste roulade or batter. Do not let children handle or play with roulade. I know, I don't know about you, but I know three generations of people in my household that would be out of compliance of those CDC recommendations. But there is no mandate. The truth is that people should be prepared for the government health experts to preach excessive caution indefinitely, because that is what public health experts have always done.
Thank you. Your time is up.
One last sentence. Normal does not mean the CDC grants permission to enjoy life again. Normal means ignoring the CDC and enjoying life anyway. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Sarah Johnson is the next speaker. Sarah Johnson. Sarah Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Johnson. I'm a resident of the township. I just brought the sign up so you could see it up close. I'd like you to vote yes for recommended masking for all tonight. I just, I don't have a long speech. I just have a couple of notes. You know, I'd like to thank Ms. Battistelli, if she's still, she's probably somewhere here, because I know she's done an enormous amount of work and taken on additional responsibilities besides the responsibilities she had pre-ben. So I want to say thank you to her, because I know this has been a very long journey. And I just want to remind, you know, there's been so much division. This is not a political issue, it shouldn't be. This should be a health issue, you know, physical, emotional, mental health. We're starting to see a lot of adverse effects to the kids. You know, I think that television has really helped divide this country, and tonight, I do hope that we can start to heal some of that division. And I just want to publicly state, anybody that wants to wear a mask, you know, staff, students, I fully support that, 1,000%. You know, I'll talk to my child about respecting people's choices and, you know, I don't think that's the point of this, is to tell everybody, you need to take your mask off. The point is just to let people make the right choice for themselves. Mr. Feinberg, thank you for publicly stating at the last meeting that you would support this. You know, that meant a lot. You know, I know that you really, stating that publicly was, you know, an important step in the right direction, so thank you for that. And, you know, I would also like to just say, like, maybe you're not going to do it tonight, but I would consider, you know, looking at removing the vaccine requirement for parents. You know, I understand Dr. Ramendos had requested that, maybe when the case numbers were very high. It's creating a lot of division. I know there's the test option. It's just, it doesn't scientifically really make sense to require parents to get a vaccine to go on a field trip. And it's also, we talk about all these staffing shortages, and now we have staff members like managing all these, you know, vaccine card uploads. This doesn't personally affect me, but I see that it's, 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 people feel that they're being punished because they've made a choice that is different from the school board. And, you know, it is, it's upsetting. I know there's been a lot of emotion, but Ms. Larson, like, we cannot mask kids for money. That's, I mean, after the last meeting of all the people. I mean, even the suggestion that we would, you know, the suggestion that we would, we would continue to mask children any other additional day, more than we need to, knowing that all the adverse effects that are happening to them is just, it's, it's upsetting when people hear that, okay? It just is. No amount of money is worth, you know, kids having open sewers and all the things we've seen. So we can't mask children for money. And that has been publicly stated. Dr. Ruchi has talked about it. The Estor funds are not tied to masking. I think Ms. Masaska can mention that again. Okay, I'm done with my time. Thank you.
Steve Westhoff is the next speaker. Steve Westhoff.
Good evening. My name is Steve Westhoff, and my family and I moved to the township last year. We are in the Philadelphia region for the health of our children. A kindergartner and a second grader now at Cooper Town Elementary School, actually recently returned to school in person. They both have complex medical needs. We don't know Dr. Rubin, but we have seen many of his colleagues at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, where I assure you, they will continue to be masking. Our kindergartner in particular has health conditions that make him particularly vulnerable, even though he is vaccinated, if he were to contract COVID-19. That has required all of us, including our second grader, to be even more cautious with our activities. On top of that, our kindergartner was unable to attend school in person until today due to a region-wide medical staffing shortage. If the board acts as is recommended today, we are really not sure what we will do in a little over a week, and I don't think we are alone. For many reasons, families like ours are still less likely to attend in person and to speak up at larger indoor gatherings on a school night, especially if we have tuned in to school board meetings over the past year. By the way, I don't want to do this, but part of the reason I'm here is because of the public commenter from last meeting that accused some board members of playing doctor, but then went on to diagnose some of them, and implicitly families like ours, with moon showers. I came here tonight in part to express to other, perhaps yet less outspoken, families and community members, that they are not alone in being concerned and confused about the proposed lifting of health. proposed lifting of health and safety measures during this ongoing pandemic. I urge the district to continue its existing health and safety plan measures, and failing that, to ask what Director McKay asked at the last meeting. How will the district continue to meet the needs of its vulnerable students, staff, and their family members? Certainly, those discussions should occur very quickly with families like mine. We have, what, 10 days? But the logistics of working out those issues, when even exposed, untested, factually close contacts are unmasked in the classroom and respiring, need to be thought through at a district-wide level as well. Being done, through, with COVID, declaring a return to normal, and encouraging the community to simply live with the virus, sounds great, but it is not self-fulfilling. The only way to whrow away the virus is by diminishing its prevalence through continued health and safety measures, and perhaps exploring additional options, such as, as I heard tonight, providing high-quality masks for students and staff. I hope they fit. And potentially exploring improved indoor ventilation. I will note that the district has already largely revised away its close-contact tracing, testing, and reporting. There continue to be health exemptions from masking, as Ms. Wisely did express tonight. I respect that. Delaware County Community Transmission is higher.
Your time is up.
It's continuing to be high, and I urge you to maintain the measures. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Litz is the next speaker. Michael Litz.
Michael Litz, Haverford Township. I had a speech prepared, but after hearing from the ICU nurses, the moms here, I don't know what else I could add that would convey the urgency with which we need to get these masks off our children. And if parents don't want to remove the mask from their children, they don't have to. That's the beauty of making it optional and recommended. I will note, my son, who's here, he's immunocompromised. I would never place that burden upon another child or another parent to do whatever it is they think I should be doing. I would also never presume to tell any of you what's in your best interest for your health, and I would ask that you extend that same courtesy to my family. Thank you.
We've got into the last speaker who signed up. Alicia Sturbakov.
My name is Alicia Sturbakov. I'm a three-year resident of Haverford Township. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of mass choice in the hands of the parents. I have four points I'd like to highlight. Number one, there was a woman recently interviewed on CNN. It was actually a doctor, Dr. Leanna Wen. She said the science has changed, that one-way masking is now okay. When for the past four years, or I'm sorry, for the past several years, our children have been told they're going to kill grandma if they don't wear a mask. And that was based on science. She also said that we need to take a serious look at the harm masks are doing to our kids. In other words, they are hurting more than helping. Lastly, she said that the CDC is becoming increasingly irrelevant. Hmm. This same woman was singing a completely different tune a few years ago, both mask and vaccine shaming anyone who didn't go along with the CDC recommendations. And may I stress, that is exactly what they are, recommendations only. Number two, 70,000-plus people were in attendance at the Super Bowl. They were maskless strangers, okay, screaming, yelling, high-fiving to celebrate for six-plus hours while our children went into school muzzled the next day. That is hypocritical, double-standard hypocrisy, to say the least, and it makes no sense. Strangers maskless versus our kids, who are not strangers to one another, and they have more than ample opportunities to develop herd immunity amongst themselves, if given the chance. Number three, I believe masking children is about two things only: control and a way to make adults feel less anxious and safe. Neither are okay. The last I checked, we are supposed to make children feel safe, not the other way around. That is a disturbingly narcissistic view and way of thinking. Number four, mask harm more than help. I could present hundreds of articles on the physical, emotional, psychological, and educational harm that they have, both short and long-term. But we are only given a short period of time to talk, and I won't belittle you all, because I know you're all intelligent enough to do the research for yourself. I believe wholeheartedly that it is beyond time to cease following the quote-unquote "increasingly irrelevant" CDC school masking guidelines. Please let our kids breathe free, fresh air, let their smiles shine bright, maskless. A quick story, if I have time. My 11-year-old daughter came to me the other night, and she said, "Mom, I did something really weird. I was walking from the hallway into my room, and I went like this, and I gestured to pull my mask up." That's called conditioning, okay? And it's creating almost like a neurosis and a psychosis in our kids. Please, I'm begging you, to stop this, or at the very least, leave it in the hands of the parents to choose. I'm urging you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we are in Section 5, Board Committee Report on Finance and Facilities, from Dave Schwartz.
Thank you very much. As I understand it, there's some kind of vote happening tonight, so that if a few folks here are interested in style, try to be brief. Couple of quick updates, just on the facility side. Ken Matthews gave an update of some of the facility projects in District. Linwood is almost done, a couple of things remaining, fencing, signing, some gym pads, but we're pretty much done now with the new school at Linwood. High School Phase 1 is also nearly complete, a couple of tabletops, the counters need to be replaced there, but those classrooms are now in use. Phase 2 has started. You can see outside there, if you take a walk, a couple of things are on back order, obviously, but that isn't moving along, about 20% done. Cooperstown and Shadum Climate Controls, again, those projects have just started. There are a few things that are on back order, supply chain issues and so forth, but all of those are scheduled currently to be completed by the summer of 2023. So no more window units for AC, hopefully, pretty soon. We also got some updates on bus purchases. As many people may know, the district has been moving to propane busing over the past few years from a diesel fleet. There's requests to purchase 10 more of those buses, and that is, that's on the docket tonight to be approved. There also is a study of the bus lot, that's a lot that has been disrepaired for a number of years. There's going to be a study done, a site planned done, I believe the engineering planning for that's also on the agenda for this evening. We also had a couple of presentations from Ms. Q about revenues and budgets. If you really want to dive into those numbers, I encourage you to check out the website and presentation. Long story short, Haverford Township pays a lot in residential taxes. I think we are fourth in the state, which surprised me. Major cost drivers are PSER, which is a pension plan for teachers and special education, of which we are chronically underfunded from both the state and federal level. And after that, there was some discussion also about the demographic study that is going to be upcoming pretty soon, to figure out, to do an analysis of our facilities, how much capacity we have, and to build off our recent demographic study. But like I said, a lot to get to still this evening, so I'll end it there.
Thank you. Item 6 is for facilities and finance. Item A, budget transfers. I will accept a motion to approve budget transfers with preapproval in the amount of $29,443.99, and transfers for ratification in the amount of $32,862.60. King moved. Crispin second. Moved in second. Did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Budget transfers are roll-call vote. Thank you for the reminder. Ms. Q, could you walk us through the roll-call vote?
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight to zero.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 6B is the bill list. I'll accept a motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed.
Schwartz moved.
Larson second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 6C is for change orders. I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders totaling $137,098.15 as listed.
Feinberg moved.
Crispin second.
Any discussion?
Just one quick note on that. There is an item on here for the Linwood Elementary signage for $12,000. That actually, while we're paying $12,000, we are getting $5,000 back from KCBA to help pay for that change of signing.
Just a quick question. Did, at the facilities meeting, did Ken give an indication of whether, I think you said, Dave, like, we're close to the end here, are we going to soon stop seeing change orders for Linwood?
Um, oh.
Oh, hi.
You're the devil, there he is.
I didn't know you were here. Welcome.
Yes, we should be getting very close. The allowances have been depleted to get rid of a lot of the change orders that we had discussed at previous meetings, so really should be trickling down at this point.
Okay, that's great news.
Same for High School Phase 1. There's a couple here this evening, and that's it. And that Phase 1 is done, then, as far as change orders.
And Ken, I'm recalling, there was a significant residual in our contingency for the Linwood project?
Yes, there's a significant amount left. You know, we'll get it finalized. It was a little over $800,000 at this point. So once we get all the final calls for the job, then we'll flush out the exact final number.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Is there a point with the project where it's closed out, done, like?
Yes, it takes a while. There's a lot of paperwork. We have most of it at this point. And then we get final documents, affidavits, final release of liens, all of those things to close it out. We checked that with Whistler Perlstein. And then, so we're getting very close to that for High School Phase 1 especially, and Linwood's not too far behind. It just takes a long time, but it's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately.
Thanks for the guest star appearance.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Hearing no other conversation, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Change orders passed.
Thank you.
Item 6D is for new school buses. I will accept a motion to approve the following purchase of new school buses and ProVision camera systems as listed through Bright Bill Bodyworks at a cost not to exceed $1,215,861 using the CoStar state pricing contract.
Schwartz moved.
Crispin second.
Any discussion?
There was a really...
Excuse me.
The room will come to order?
There was a nice discussion from... Do you want me to keep going? There was a, there was a nice discussion from the Director of Transportation outlining the current state of our bus fleet and the plan going forward for the future to upgrade some of our older buses that are becoming a little bit outdated, and to upgrade them to the new propane buses. So for any of our board members or any of the public that wasn't at that meeting, I definitely would encourage you to watch that. It was a very detailed presentation outlining all the details of the bus fleet, so thank you.
Right, these, this was to replace buses that had been on the roads for 12-plus years and had the most mileage on them and were incurring the most maintenance costs. And they are also taking diesel-powered buses off of the road for the replacement of propane, which benefits the district with lowered admissions, less cost to operate and maintain. It is a quieter experience for students and drivers, and it means there's no diesel exhaust or smell. And so the motion is to approve the purchase of the buses at the CoStar state contract pricing, which is a negotiated, approved price. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Item 6E is for the M&amp;T paving project, which is the maintenance and transportation paving project. I will accept a motion to approve the following proposals for the engineering, bid specs, and project oversight for the M&amp;T paving project not to exceed $82,500.
Feinberg moved.
Snodgrass second.
Any discussion?
Again, they did a really nice presentation, JR presented to us at the last Finance and Facilities meeting, and the photos, he had a lot of photos, and the drone flew over and showed us the whole lot, and like, it really needs an upgrade, very obviously. So I'm glad that we're able to vote on this tonight.
As for yours.
And this is, the maintenance and transportation is District property at, off a hilltop road behind Barnabuse, if the community was not aware of its location. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Into Item 7, human resources, retirements and resignations, I will accept a motion to accept the following retirement and resignations as listed.
Crispin move. King second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 7B is for appointments, to approve the following appointments as listed.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 7C, leave of absence. I'll accept a motion to approve the following leave request.
Feinberg move.
Crispin second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're now into Item 8, people's services. Item A is a contract approval. I will accept a motion to approve the following contracts for services provided to the district as listed.
Vitale moved.
Larson second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Item 9, curriculum and instruction. Item A is a student educational excursion. I'll accept a motion to approve the following student educational excursion as listed.
Snodgrass moved. King second.
Any discussion? This is for the high school boys' track team to go to in a way meet. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 9B is to ratify high school girls' track meet. I'll accept a motion to ratify attendance of the high school girls' track team at a meet that was rescheduled for February 12, 2022.
Crispin move. Larson second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 9C is a change in our graduation requirements. I will accept a motion to approve an additional graduation requirement for students of the class of 2026 and beyond to pass a half-credit course in financial literacy.
Feinberg move.
Crispin second. Moved in second.
Is there any discussion?
Again, the Curriculum Committee meeting, I reported on this at our last board meeting, there was a fantastic presentation about the financial literacy program, and I'm so excited that we can do this. I think it supports a lot of our district goals for our strategic plan, including preparing contemporary citizens, and as you mentioned, Ms. Wedeman, social, emotional, hell, excuse me, social, emotional wellness, because financial health is very much tied to our own health and wellness. So I'm very glad that we can do this, so thank you for bringing this to us. I really appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10 is a policy, the first reading of local board policy, Section 000. It will be presented by Antoinette Snodgrass, but first we'll get a motion to accept the first reading of the following policies, 001 through 009.
Larson move. Larson moved. Crispin, second.
And then...
Okay, great. Thank you. Tonight, we're presenting the first fruits of the policy audit. As I reported at our last meeting, we had our first policy committee meeting in January that kicked off our policy audit. You'll recall from last fall, we made the decision to review all of our policies. We have dozens of them. I don't know the exact number. But, and, you know, what has been done in the past is that a policy would come up for review to the board when a change in law occurred or if something spurred it. But we really want to be proactive at looking at some of our, at all of our policies. One of the policies that we looked at at our meeting was from the year 2000. So, you know, really want to make sure that we are looking at everything and making sure that it is up to date for the school district that we, that we have today. At the meeting, we discussed, and what we have for tonight is the policies in the zero 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 section, which is our local board procedures. So as a reminder to the new board members and the public, we have a policy committee meeting that is recorded, that is available for viewing. But regardless of what we discuss at our policy committee meeting, all policies that are up for either adoption or revision come to the board for two readings. So tonight will be the first reading of these policies that we will go over. And so we can kick it off. Policy zero zero one, name and classification. We reviewed this policy. First, our solicitor reviewed it, and then it came to the policy committing for review. My understanding is that we had no edits to this one. So something that we discussed at the policy committee meeting is that we would add a line on all of our policies for not just adopted, but also for reviewed, for circumstances like this one that we have in front of us, to, you know, keep a track of what we have been reviewing. I don't see that, or let me see. Am I, I have them up here. Do we have that added? We do. We have last reviewed added. So it'll say January twenty-fourth, 2022. Will that say that when we actually vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, so that will, after our second reading and then on the vote, that, that date will appear. If any board members have questions on zero zero one, we can talk about them now? That one's easy. Zero, policy zero zero two. We did have some changes made just to reflect the current state of the law. So this one was last adopted and reviewed in 2010. We had a change in the required school age that we wanted to reflect, and some other administrative matters, and the second paragraph on powers, just to make sure that it reflected current law. If anyone has any questions or comments on zero zero two, can talk about them now? The policy committee meeting was very exciting. So if people want to go back and view that, we're next, we'll move right along to zero zero three, which is functions of the board. For this one, the, the major review was to add the definition of our emergency. So you'll see that reflected in the, the draft policy and some other administrative nits here and there. Also not substantive. Feel free to chime in, okay? We can move right along. Policy zero zero four, membership. This one did have some more edits to it. And one that I want to point out is that we, we changed all of the, the gendered terms to be inclusive and neutral, to reflect a gender, gender-neutral and inclusive atmosphere that we provide. So all, throughout all of the policies that have any sort of gendered term, we did change them to reflect that. So you'll see that throughout this policy. And those are the major changes. We, we did also add a section on civility, and civility among board members and what we expect. So I'll read that out loud because I think it's important. The board expects its members to be role models of civility while attending district-sponsored events on or off district property. The board expects its members to promote a respectful environment. All members of the board are expected to communicate with each other and with district employees, students, volunteers, and members of the general public in an atmosphere of civility and mutual respect. And that's something that I'm, I'm glad that we're adding here because we've discussed before how we are all a model of how we want our community and our students to present themselves. If anyone has any questions on zero zero four? Zero zero five is organization. You'll see here again, gender-neutral terms. And, let me see, notes on this one. So this one, another change here is to language on committees. So I think it's the last paragraph that's presented in this one. Yeah, so it's the last section, zero zero five, on committees. And just to give the board some background on the genesis of this, since, since creating our new committee structure last year, we have been operating under a committee of the whole. And what that means is that every board member is welcome and encouraged to attend all committee meetings and participate meaningfully in all of our meetings. The policies committee, the policy committee's impression was that this should continue. There, we found out that there are districts around the state that have specific board members that are assigned to committees, and those are the really only ones that are supposed to participate. We didn't think that that's how the Haverford School District wanted to conduct our business. So we continued with the committee of the whole, and that's what we have reflected in, in this paragraph. Is there any questions or comments on zero zero five? Okay. Moving on to zero zero six is meetings. This one did have a lot of changes because we moved a lot of the technical procedures to administrative regulations. Since those are really more fluid, they are more appropriate in administrative regulations that can be changed more easily by the administration, since the, the district administration is really the ones who are implementing those. Whereas obviously, as you can see, adopting, revising board policies takes much more effort than, than what goes on to administrative regulations. So a lot of what the changes in meetings was moved to administrative regulation. Is there any questions on zero zero six? We did also beef up the language for special meetings. That was recommended by our council. Zero zero seven is access to policies. This one really didn't have any changes. So another one, and actually, it was recently revised in 2019. So that one, we didn't have much to discuss. And I, finally, the last board policy that's presented today for the first reading is zero zero nine, review of school board policies. This is a new policy for our district and one that's being added to reflect the ongoing audit. It also does reflect the new committee structure of the board. Again, as I stated before, that it would be a committee of the whole. We did add here that it would be helpful to have board members who are committed to making reasonable efforts to attending all of the committee meetings for a specific committee, so that we can make sure we have meaningful participation at each committee meeting. But with that said, we want to continue to encourage all board members to attend all committee meetings. So this policy was originally, I think, one sentence, and I had revisions to every single part of it. So again, the policy committee meeting is available to watch online, and you can really look at what was discussed, sometimes word by word. That is all of the, for the first reading, that's what we have unless there are further comments of the board. So just like I said, this is the first reading, which means that at, which means that at the next board meeting, we will go over all of these policies again. To the extent that there are public comments on the policy, you can email us, or you can come speak at the meeting about, about the, these policies. And our next policy committee meeting, I think, is in March, but we can update that at the next meeting. I think that's available online.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the board? All right, the motion has been made and seconded to accept this first reading of these policies. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Antoinette, for walking us through that. And now, item eleven, other items. Item A, revision to the health and safety plan. I will accept a motion to, to move, I accept a motion to approve revisions to sections three A, three D, and three H. In the 2021 dash 2022, health and safety plan as noted in the version attached to the agenda, which specifically includes the following revised language in sections three A. As of February twenty-eighth, 2022, unless mandated, masks will be recommended for any staff, students, and visitors in all buildings. The district will continue to monitor case counts within our buildings. Should case counts in a building reach three percent or more of the total population, including students and staff, for a period of seven consecutive days, that building will return to masks required until the case counts return to below three percent for seven consecutive days.
Feinberg moved.
Short's second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Feinberg?
You know, we've been following this for, feels like forever. I had a number of concerns that I had the opportunity to raise in our previous discussions, and I feel that, that they have been well researched and addressed. You know, specifically was interested in what provisions the administration would have for students with disabilities, and it sounds like there's a mechanism in place. I was concerned about N95 masks, and it sounds like there will be enough, it's my understanding, there will be enough for all students and staff through the IU. I was concerned with a mechanism in the event that case counts kick up again, that we could implement a limited masking at the school, a particular school where that's occurring. And that, that change has been added to this. Also add that, you know, the case counts have been coming down, and it is our expectation that CDC will be taking action over the next couple weeks. So I, it's been a long, strange trip. And I, I support this change.
And I think, you know, just, the, the one word I think that should come out of, of this vote tonight is respect. And it goes both ways, both for those who, who choose to continue wearing masks and for those who will choose not to. And it's got to start at home, be reinforced in schools, and permeated through the community. I think that's a very important message. It's got to be really hit, hit home. But that is one thing that I think really needs to be emphasized as we move forward with this revision to this policy.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I really appreciate all of the hard work, thought, and emotion, and rationality, and all of the many, just, you know, it's been a roller coaster, I'll put it that way. So just thank you to the administration for constantly following the ever-changing guidance to, you know, facilitating these discussions that we've been having since December. And also, I'm looking forward to hopefully not discussing the health and safety plan at our next school board meeting. But also, thank you so much to, you know, my colleagues here on the board, because this is not an easy decision. And we all know that we're not, we are not qualified to be making this decision, but it's been placed upon us. So that's, that is the place that we're at. I will also say that I appreciate that the three percent threshold has been built in. And now that I have a better understanding of what that means and how it's being calculated, I do think that that is a reasonable fail-safe. I think as well that, keeping in mind that this health and safety plan is, its sole purpose is to maintain safe in-person learning, that we're being responsive to the ever-changing conditions of the pandemic, hopefully soon to be endemic, and that we will just continue to roll with this and adapt as necessary.
I guess I just wanted to, I just wanted to add, I've thought a lot about this decision over the last two weeks. And, you know, we're in a much different position now on the cusp of March 2022 than we were in March 2020. And, you know, our, now... And I think, you know, as our knowledge base has evolved and expanded on the virus, and the virus itself has changed, I do think now is the time that we need to change with the current reality, and we need to adopt the policy recommendations that, not just because CHOP is saying it, because that is the reality. And I think, you know, we do have to learn to live with COVID. And I think, you know, it's, I understand for some people, change is not always easy. People have been doing this for two years. And, and I'm not unsympathetic to that at all, and for the member, but I do think it's unrealistic to think that we'll ever eradicate COVID. I think we have to learn to live with it, and I appreciate the board bringing this forward.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate the district's, the administration's efforts and the boards. I'd like to reiterate that throughout this, I think the board and the district have worked in good faith for the care and concern of our students and our staff and our community. I hold that, that this change will be something that some people embrace and others have concerns about. And the district, you know, needs to communicate that there will be accommodations where we can make them and try to keep school safe and in-person as much as we can. This is an important change, but it is an incremental change to our health and safety plan. The plan will be revisited. This is not an end to masking in schools. Masking is still required under certain circumstances, and we need the community's participation and support so that we can keep this going, that we can keep in-person school going by keeping kids home when they're sick, by doing the symptom checking, by adhering to the quarantine protocols after close contact and isolation after COVID infections. That's how we keep this going. And I think this plan can, you know, still has all of those protocols in it. I appreciate that we're at the point where we can consider this incremental change with removing the mask mandate. Mask will still be recommended. And there's no other discussion. It will be time for a vote. On the item of revising the health and safety plan, which has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion passes. The room will come to order? The room will come to order? As the room is clearing, we did have one speaker signed up for the second public comment period, Mr. William Bryant. He left. Okay. I'll call one more time Mr. William Bryant for public comment. No? Okay. We will move on to board reports. Dave Schwartz, would you like to start?
I wouldn't mind doing, I, I wouldn't mind doing facilities, so, so no report. I'm good.
Dr. King?
I'll just speak on me continuing to attend the PSBA meetings. I always enjoy open dialogue.
If the room could quiet down as you dismiss, we still have to conclude our business. Thank you. Can you hear us back there?
I lost my train of thought. I always enjoy the open dialogue with other school board members. There's a good opportunity to receive new information and continuing to learn this process.
Thank you.
No report.
Dr. Chris King? Ms. Snodgrass?
I just want to say that this, I think it was this past week, was a recognition of our guidance counselors.
I'm sorry, we are still conducting our business. Please go to the hallway.
We recognized our guidance counselors this past week, and I just really want to send heartfelt gratitude to all of our mental health professionals that work in our schools. Our guidance counselors do wonderful work. I know that the SEL class in the elementary schools is something that is so unique and wonderful to our district. It's something that when we joined the district when my oldest daughter was in kindergarten, was such a pleasant surprise to find out that she had guidance now now SEL. And to talk to, I mean, even today, you know, my, she's in fifth grade, and I still love speaking with her about what they're talking about in their SEL class, and she loves to open up about it. You know, her guidance counselor is hosting a wellness session once a week after school. And so, you know, these are really, you know, some of the heroes of our community. And so I'm glad that we had this week to to celebrate them. And and I just, I want to send my my thanks out to them. Thank you.
And we'd like to note that the chair of our counseling department is here tonight.
Thank you. Catherine Malam is our elementary school, school counseling department chair, and she coordinates with all of our other elementary counselors and is a person who was one of the chief architects of that curriculum that you have mentioned there. So thank you, Catherine, to you and to all of your colleagues, elementary and secondary alike. We appreciate all that you've done.
I didn't really have a report, but I want to echo off of what Antoinette just said. Our elementary school counselors, thank you so much for all that you do. They're truly phenomenal, and I only really have experience with Mrs. Popiel at Linwood. And she is honestly a treasure. And I know she has helped my youngest with some anxiety issues and for a child who was not, who was hesitant to work with her. She has made it such a joy that it's one of his great pleasures. We are so lucky to have her in the district, and I know all of the counselors. So thank you so much.
Just want to start off by thanking those of you who have stuck around. The credits aren't rolling yet. And as I'm sure you've seen from tonight, our board deals with a broad range of issues that keeps our schools operating. So I appreciate your, you know, dedication to hearing us out and what else we have to say as we close out this meeting tonight. I did want to give a quick update. As I've mentioned in the past, I am now representing Haverford on the DCIU board. DCIU stands for the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. This, it's a big learning curve for me, and it's it's a role that I'm excited to have taken on. Mrs. Minji had previously served on the DCIU board. So just to give you a little bit of background on what intermediate units are. In 1970, Pennsylvania passed Act 102, and that created 29 intermediate units in the state of Pennsylvania or the Commonwealth. And these IU's are mandated to provide educational services to public and to non-public schools. Some of these mandated services include curriculum development and instructional improvement, educational planning services, instructional material services, continuing professional development, pupil personnel services, management services, state and federal agency liaison services. So there's a broad range of work that they are tasked with. DCIU has over 60 budgets that they manage, and they have $140 million operating budget. And that budget will be coming before the board. Ms. Q, you might know better than I do, but in the next month or two for us to vote on. So that would be our share that we pay into the DCIU for the services that are rendered to our district. Just to give you another update, DCIU houses, you know, our career and technical programs for the county, and they're looking at some upgrades, substantial upgrades to and renovations to the Fulkroft site. And that would include additional classroom space for CTE programs, for the practicing nurse program, practical nursing program, sorry, early intervention and early childhood education. So that that's something that the DCIU board will be voting on, you know, in the relatively near future. Additionally, as we learned tonight, DCIU will be providing masks to K and 95 masks to students who and staff who would like to wear those. And I believe that that is part of the ARPESR funding, the third iteration of that, that DCIU has received. They did not receive funding the first two rounds, but they did receive some money for this third round. They're required to set aside 10% of those funds by PDE for statewide initiatives. They'll be using these funds to address staffing challenges for the remainder of the 21-22 school year and through 22-23. So that will look like retention bonuses and other incentive, financial incentives to help keep staff. The funds will also be used to support the ongoing equity work of the Teaching and Learning Division. And I do hope that Ms. Christiansen will be a part of that. I'm assuming she will. And also to provide instructional program support for DCIU Student Services Division and member districts. So there will also be some additional programs that we may benefit from as a district that will be offered. And the funds are also being used for the continued implementation of their Health and Safety Plan. So this is my first DCIU update to the board, and I will continue to give these, hopefully on a monthly basis, and just apprise you of where our contribution, our to the budget is going and how those funds are being spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Feinberg?
On February 8th, the governor, Governor Wolf, delivered his budget address. And his ask, and I would underline the word ask, is for 1.55 billion, 24% increase in basic education funding statewide, with 1.25 billion to be distributed through the Fair Funding Formula and 300 million to go through the Level Up Program to the 100 most underfunded districts. 200 million, a 16% increase for special ed funding. Another part of his budget address dealt with charter school reform. He's proposing charter school reform that is projected to save $373 million statewide. It would apply the Special Education Funding Formula to all brick-and-mortar charter schools. And that, it would anticipate 174 million in savings. It would also establish a statewide cyber charter tuition rate of $9,800, which is projected to save 199 million in savings. So will any of this happen? Not with these numbers, but we're hoping that as the budget process gets underway and negotiations get underway, that there, hopefully there'll be significant increases in the budget that's due June 30th. And I'm particularly interested in where the proposed charter school reforms go. Just like to also, I thank Kristin for taking on the DCIU position. It's a, it's a, it is a huge learning curve. Before Susan Minji had that position, Phil Hopkins, who served on this board for 24 years, I think also served on the IU board for almost all of that. The IU does so many different things, and they're essential to the school districts functioning. So thanks for taking that on, Kristin. Oh, I had one other thing.
Yeah.
If if the governor's budget goes through, what would it mean to the Haverford Township School District? We would get an additional 1.4 million in basic education funding. We would get about $293,000 increase in special ed funding, and we would save about $156,000 on charter school tuition. So that's it.
Thank you for that. I don't have much of a report. I feel like I've spent the last two weeks doing a lot of prepping and consulting to get to the point of this vote tonight. I appreciate everyone's thoughtful consideration and all the work that everybody in the district and the board brought to get us to this point tonight. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank each of the board members tonight received a recognition from our representative state, Representative Greg Vitale and State Representative Mike Zabel in recognition of School Board Director Appreciation Month. As Mr. Feinberg is talking about, you know, what's going on at the state, one of the things that our district enjoys and appreciates is the strong support for public education that we have from our representatives. And it's nice of them to acknowledge our work, and it is a good partnership in trying to advocate for the best policies, the best funding for public education to enhance not just Haverford, but districts all across the state. And so I think I can just wrap up with that for my board report. On executive session isn't item 14 on the agenda. We did not have an executive session. There was an informational topic for board development. So item 15 is for adjournment. I'm sorry, item 15A is, the next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on March 3rd, 2022 at 7:30 PM in the auditorium at Haverford High School. I will now accept the motion to adjourn.
King motion.
Chris been second.
Thank you. Good night.